Let's call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, June 26th to order. If I could ask everybody to please stand and accept the right of reading.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Rudy.
Here.
Huber.
Here.
Lunsford.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Mauer.
Is that it? Loose, yeah.
Loose is here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed you.
Thought that went by a little quick.
I'm so sorry.
Kevin, right? Got Kevin?
Okay, all right, so we know Ellen Mauer has asked for an order. Okay, our agenda, we have, we will have a brief moment of silence here in a second. We'll open it up for public comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes. President's report, we have some recognition tonight. Then we'll have the superintendent's report, which covers a number of topics. The consent vote agenda will approve, we just reviewed that within the last thirty minutes. Some detail, brief updates from program and personnel, and facilities and finance. Are you going to update on property? We're not going to actually update anything on property.
No.
All right. Sito?
I don't know what you want.
And IAAT, Jim?
No, no.
Okay, and then we will have an executive session tonight. Two topics, employment of an employee, five ILCS 120 slash 2C1, and then probable litigation, five ILCS 120 slash 2C11. We will not be taking action after that. That's starters, just in case. But we will not be taking any action, and then we will adjourn. All right? So before I begin, I need to appoint a secretary pro pen, that will be number one step. Okay? Any other questions? All right, so, do you want to?
Thank you.
Please. For our community, last month, our dear friend and colleague Deb Larson lost her great battle with cancer. Deb dedicated the majority of her career to District 128. She began teaching math at LHS in 1982, and eventually became the math department supervisor. She moved to the district office Personnel Department in 1999, and later became an assistant principal at the newly opened Vernon Hills High School. Finally, Deb returned to district office as Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, the position she held until she retired. Deb made a great impact on her students and colleagues, and she will be greatly missed by all who knew her. Please join me in a moment of silence for Deb. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, anyone from the public would like to speak? Stuart Dweed, can you pick everybody up?
I can pick everybody up.
Tim Anderson, N21, Bartlett Terrace, Libertyville. Just two things to cover. First one is, I was informed earlier at the committee meetings that when you vote on page two, the approval of the regular board meeting, you'll have on the board meeting minutes, that I would get a written response, as I was guaranteed at the last board meeting, on the two questions is, who is the compliance officer, and what are the policies and recourse if the public suggested there's violations of board policy? I've been informed orally, but not in writing, and I still request, I believe I'm owed it in writing, because it says in the minutes of the board meeting, I would get it in writing, but I've been informed, for the record, there is no compliance officer, and there is absolutely no policy for recourse or reviewing violations of policy. So I think that needs to be recorded for the record. There is no recourse for board policies. So therefore, policies are written, but they have no merit, because there could be no challenge to the policy or recourse to the policy. There is no format. To that end, I've been continuously bringing to the boards' attention what I thought was a violation of Section 2 Code 105. Because the board would not deal with it, the same way District 70 does, by forming an ethics submission, I had to go to the state's attorney's office. At the last board meeting, Pat, you read a letter from Lisa Madigan's office, because a member from the public at the meeting before that made comments as to what they thought was a violation of policy and law. And Lisa Madigan looked into it and responded. And you read that response to the public. I didn't think it was necessary, but you felt it was necessary. And I asked at that meeting, if in fact, a law enforcement agency makes the decision either way, will you read it? I did not hear a response that you're going to read the indictments that came down last week. But I think most people know that one board member and a superintendent's secretary were indicted for perjury. And Pat, I just want to take my time, because you, and I'll read just part of Denise's indictment. It goes on, this grand jury, chosen, elected, sworn in by the county, et cetera, et cetera. On December 1st, Denise whipped perjury, but the line to focus on is, under oath, the New Republic signed a petition, nominated petition for Patrick Rudy, non-Parson candidate for the District 128 School Board, Sheets 4, 5, and 6. So Pat, you are referenced in this indictment. My interpretation is, therefore, you are a non-indicted co-conspirator of the problem. It is a horrible thing, and I feel, and I am very sincere about this. Denise had to, and Ellen did, had to have mugshots put in the paper. That is distressfully and humiliating. Collateral damages are there, families and friends. It shouldn't have happened. Now, the question is, it wouldn't have happened if Tim hadn't made an issue of it. No, it wouldn't have happened if the board had dealt with the matter. So Denise's problem is on Pat's and Prentice's. She is an employee, she directly reports to Prentice. She's not had her day in court yet to say why she did it. But she was indicted for circulating petitions and perjuring herself that she did it, as Ellen Mauer was indicted for that. These are serious charges. The board should address it? I don't know. Maybe we're going to hear later under the president's report. When a board member is indicted for felony criminal acts, do they have to be suspended or resigned from the board until they are vindicated? Yes, you're innocent till proven guilty, but this board has things they have to get about, and is it proper for someone under indictment to still sit at the board and vote? I don't know. Apparently, there's no policy on that one. So the board has to address that. But if a board member is indicted, can they stay on the board? It takes four members of the board to vote for a replacement. That's your decision. The public is going to watch to see how you handle the matter. There are other things I brought up before, in regards to bid rigging and bid stringing. I am comfortable the state's attorney is now going to deal with those too, as other things. If you enforced your board policy, reviewed your board policies, I wouldn't have to go to the state's attorney, and they wouldn't then have to ask the grand jury for indictments. So it is about time that the board gets together, deals with these ethics problems, or else there's just going to have to be more indictments until you do. I think I've used less than three minutes.
Anyone else?
Yeah, go ahead. Anna Drake, N28, Philly. Things need to be done properly, but I do think it's appropriate for somebody to be on the board until they're convicted, because we are all essential, proven guilty. That just might do sense for it. I wanted to address you guys kind of about two things. One, I needed to be a clone tonight. I needed to be here, because it's an important meeting. Now, it's needed to be over at the Plan Commission, where they're addressing District 128 business. We beg you guys time and time and time again to try and solve these conflicts. At a minimum, I am going to be writing at the Plan Commission and asking them that when they're doing actual District 128 business, please not schedule it on District 128 board meeting night, because I should think you guys would want to be, you know, weighing in on that, 21 million dollar construction also. The main thing I wanted to address all about was, here's a shop, parking at the high school next year. So we had a meeting, you guys heard what everybody had to say. Two days later, we heard that y'all are looking at possibly closing the back gate to anybody who's not a permitted parker at the high school. So one of the students, one of the lucky students who won the lottery, or somebody who works at the school. I'm going to implore you guys not to do that. One, that gate has taken a tremendous amount of relief off of the traffic on 176, just under normal circumstances. Your situation on the campus, while you're going to have construction traffic going on, it's actually going to be a little relieved by the fact you have less students driving onto the campus next year. So you'll, you will have more people driving their kids because of that. So you've got the kids who were fortunate enough to get the passes, and the families who weren't fortunate enough to get the passes. We can't even pull onto the campus from that way to drop our children off at their state mandated education. You're going to have construction going on on Butterfield. You guys are doing construction, and who knows what's going to happen on the Archdiocese property during the same timeframe. Throwing all of that traffic out onto 176 is going to further congest the road that we all try to avoid. Anybody knows the traffic pattern here in Libertyville? And what's effectively going to happen, I'm going to pull my son up to the back, tell him to stop, drop, and roll, get the heck out, and walk the rest of the way, and I'm not going to go out on the 176. I think it's creating a problem. I appreciate you guys are trying to address the problem, but I think your solution is actually worse than what you're trying to address.
Anyone else?
First, before, I have some comments I'd like to make, but in the committee meeting, I heard Superintendent Lee talk about detachments. And if you will indulge me, as a member of District 68's board, I've gone through the detachment process, I wanted to share with this board a couple of my experiences, and I don't want that to count against my three minutes. Is that okay?
Yes.
First, Judge Winter, who was mentioned, same judge is on Lancaster. She got it wrong then, the law's changed, sounds like she might get it right this time. So just so you know, same judge. The impact on District 68 from the Lancaster detachment was significant. We brought in about 32 kids. The tax revenue that we got was about half of what we spent to educate those 32 kids. So the hit to 68 was about 180 grand a year from that detachment. That's one of the reasons why we fought the detachment so hard, and we'll continue to fight them. Second, we don't have the room at 68. I don't know what 128's capacity is. We're bumping up against capacity. We're looking at, if we have more detachments, trailers in the parking lot. Nobody wants that. But finally, from our board perspective, it's a fundamental fairness. You pay a premium to live in Libertyville. When I moved here, I looked at some houses in Daybreak and asked my wife, why are we looking where we live when we can get something much cheaper there? My brother-in-law, who lived here, said, it's the schools. So it's a fundamental fairness issue. You know where your kids are going to school when you buy the house. You shouldn't be able to squeeze your way in and not pay the premium. So I just wanted to share with you the perspective that I've had, and I have also appreciated the way the districts have worked together. And it's not just 68 working with 128, it's working with Warren and with Woodland, because they have a vested interest too. It hurts them as much as it hurts us. So I just wanted to share with you that perspective. As you know, from the email that I sent to the board last month, I was unable to attend the main meeting in order to present my counterpart to the official board position on the hiring process involving the two administrative positions. I have three things that I'd like to share with the board this evening. First, while the Attorney General's office found there was not a technical violation of the Open Meetings Act, that's not a despondent decision. Any citizen may file a lawsuit asking the courts to decide whether there's a violation of the statute. I didn't do that. But going forward, I'm going to continue to review the agendas, and the next time that the board votes on an item that's not on the agenda for a vote, I may in fact bring such a suit to determine, have the courts determine whether that's proper procedure. And I believe you might be giving me that opportunity tonight, because I see on the agenda that the superintendent is going to recommend the appointment of some FOIA officers. I don't see that on for a vote. If you vote on it, and it's not listed for a vote, you've given me my next opportunity to file a complaint. All you have to do to solve this problem.
Go ahead, finish.
I don't see it on there.
Go ahead, finish.
Yeah. All you have to do to solve this problem is just clearly put what you're voting on under action items. That's all I'm asking you to do. Don't rely on the fact that it might technically be proper for the superintendent to include it in his comments and then vote on it.
Right, so can I clarify just?
Yeah.
All right, so there's a star next to Agenda Item Number 1.
Yeah.
Now, there is a footnote to the star that says, there's a star here that says, board action will be taken.
Okay, I didn't see, when I looked online.
And by the way, that has been on the agenda. First of all, that star has always been there, and those of us on the board understood that to be the case.
Yeah.
But to further clarify that, in response to your public comments a few months ago, that change was immediately made to clarify that.
When I pulled up the board agenda on my iPad and flipped through all of the various things, the agenda was there, and then tonight, when I saw the pink copy, I saw for the first time the attachments. So that's a great step in the right direction.
Usually have to scroll down a little bit. That's a little confusing.
It's at the bottom of the agenda.
Yeah.
It's not in the, hold on, let me scroll down.
Maybe one more step, just to throw on the bottom. This is what we're voting on.
It's not in the attachments?
Yeah.
It's at the very bottom, after the last agenda.
After 10, Wayne.
After 10.
After number 10.
So you have to dig.
We can move it to the top of the agenda, if that makes it clearer for people. I got no issue with that. Effective immediately, can we move that to the top of the agenda? Okay, that's fine.
That would solve the problem.
Put it in bold print, if needed, put it in colors, whatever you got to do.
And my point here tonight is, I just wanted to put a bow on some things, just to sort of wrap up. And I appreciate you entertaining that and doing that. The second item that I wanted to talk about was the actual hiring process itself. There was a lot of description that the board and administration went through a very thorough search. I filed a FOIA request, a Freedom of Information Act request. I got 11 pages in response. That's all. So the entire hiring process generated 11 pages of documents. And one question I specifically asked was, all documents the board relied on in reviewing candidates and making the decision? The answer I got was, no documents. So I find it beyond belief that a proper hiring process would generate no documents. Lastly, District 128 has a written policy regarding bullying to protect students, and it says in part, bullying is communications made in writing or electronically that have the effect of substantially interfering with the student's ability to participate in or benefit from the services, activities, or privileges provided by the school. This same policy against bullying should apply to the general public's participation in public comment. After my public comment at the April meeting, District 128 took an unprecedented step of posting its position on the Facebook page for 128. And then they went further and sent an email to the entire district with that position. Well, I was able to respond to the Facebook post, but since I don't have the email addresses for all of the members in the district, including parents who are my peers, I couldn't respond to that. I feel like that step was bullying. And you don't want to do that to your public, because public comment provides valuable input. You may not agree with what you hear, but it's a perspective you may not have thought of. In my six years on the District 68 board, there have been a lot of issues that I never thought of, and I disagreed with, and I'm on the losing end of a lot of 6-1 votes. But at least I had the opportunity to hear it, investigate it, and be aware of it before I voted. There's a change in the way things are being done in 128. I think you can appreciate that. The public's getting active, and they're demanding that the board and the administration follow the rules. And in particular, they're demanding that the board do its own investigation into issues and represents an independent voice separate from the administration. Thank you for the time.
Anyone else?
Bill Bennett, 1109, Los Cal, Fort, Libertyville, Wildcat Class 86. I had two things. One, appreciate the work on the parking and running out those ground balls. I like that phrase, I'm going to use that again. But I didn't hear anything about, I had suggested last time, perhaps maybe looking at St. John's Lutheran or the church down on Garfield and Austin, which appear to be closer than, was it the Free Church? That's got a big parking lot and rarely has people in it. So I just thought that would be another great possible step that's approximate and safe travel to the, to the school.
Bill, I'm sorry I didn't mention that, mention that committee on the string of things that we ran down, but from our working group at that meeting, someone is contacting the churches to see if that's even a possibility.
Yeah.
You know, with, if they're running preschools and whatever, they'll give us some slides. So we are looking at that possibility.
Okay.
So thank you, though, for, because I forgot to mention that.
I forgot to include one comment. I always focused on the process, and I meant that I focused on the process, and I wish our two new administrators the best of luck and the most success at District 128.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Okay.
All right, so, under the president's report tonight is a very special night, a milestone of sorts.
For some people.
Yeah. We have very, three very distinguished people who have been with us for a number of years. And suffice it to say, I think, in all three cases, successfully achieving countless contributions to this district. Those three people being Dr. Al Fleming, Mrs. Yasmin Data, and Dr. Marina Scott, all of whom will be retiring at the end of this month. I can remember when you all said you were retiring, and it just seemed like four years ago was a long time out there, and it's hard to believe that this day has finally arrived. So on behalf of everybody, I don't know if you have any additional comments, but I just want to say thank you for all of your many years of service, your extreme hard work, your patience. I don't know how more, much more independent I can be when it comes to your reports, but we'll try. But it's been a pleasure to work with all of you. I think you are what exemplifies this district and the kind of people that we have, and your commitment to the students, and, you know, really change lives. So I hope for you, it's been extremely rewarding. I know it's been very rewarding to work with you, and again, I just want to say thanks for all of your help and service, and I wish you the very best in your new endeavors, which I hope you can enjoy thoroughly.
And I would add, yeah. And I would add, this over the last six or seven months, we've kind of been going through pieces of D128, Renaissance, good to great, some of the dramatic increases in student achievement that we've had, and as a result, some of the external recognition that the district has received. And I can tell all of you, as you all know in your own world, that we're only as good as our people around us. There is no superintendent or building principal that is smart enough to have all the answers in this very complex world that we live in today in public education. So to have a compelling, really gifted set of leaders in the district is really critical to our success at the end of the day, to help us make it happen and lead those efforts. And Yasmin is the most senior of the administrators in the district. Yas, you were hired by Don, right?
Correct.
So Yas goes back to the latter part of Don Gossett's tenure, long tenure as superintendent and administrator in the district, and then worked for about 10 years for Dave, and has worked with me for the last nine years in her role. And then Marina came in first as Associate Superintendent, and then Brad left and went to Libertyville or Highland Park, and we did an interim for two years, because we would not settle. We were waiting for a Marina kind of principal. And Marina had an interest in leading that great school, and has done a phenomenal job during her time here. And then, of course, Al came as Associate Superintendent, who is really, in our world, the chief operating officer, really kind of leads the district and keeps things going on a day-to-day basis. And Al is highly regarded by the leadership team, the staff in the district, for his very even demeanor in dealing with sometimes very challenging issues, and he's certainly been a great right and left hand for me as the superintendent to allow me what I need to do as a superintendent and still keep the district moving forward. So we've already had an opportunity to kind of interact with Marina and Yas and Al several times now at the end of the run, at the end of the kind of chicken, chicken and fried chicken circuit at the end of the day, with the banquets at the end of the year, and gatherings. But I want to say to you again how much that you have meant to me professionally and personally in terms of the high quality work that you've done to serve the students and the parents of the district. So on behalf of the administration, teachers, and support staff, thank you for your phenomenal work. And I think Pat has something to give you.
Yeah, so for each of you, we have a certificate. It's a certificate of appreciation upon retirement. The District 128 Board of Education and Administration recognize each of you for your distinguished service to our students, staff, and families, given on this day, the 26th of June, 2017.
Can we have you guys come this way with us? Again, one more time. Oh, you want us to come up? Or you want to stay here, Mary, or come up there?
You can.
Okay, let's just go to the, okay, I'll move to here.
One for you. Thank you for all your contribution. One for you. And with you goes a tremendous sense of humor. Still getting over the horse.
Going to miss those stories.
And all of your hard work. We will definitely miss you. I'm sure Dan will be calling.
All right, let's squeeze in a little bit.
Thanks again.
And while we're setting down again, I do want to let you know that both Yasmin and Al have done phenomenal work with Bryant and Dan in the transition, and will continue to be available for them to assist as they need in transition. So thank you for that, because that crossover is really important too for us. Okay?
Okay, Superintendent's report.
Okay, we start with some good news tonight. Even though it's summer, we have students that are very active. 2017, D128 graduates Ryan Bogan and Anika McDermott-Henman from LHS, and Ashwini Deshpande from VHHS were named to the Daily Herald Lake County Academic Team for 2016-17. VHS Senior Oliver Wang was named honorable mention. Seven D128 students were recently selected for the 2018 Illinois High School Theater Festival, All-State Production of Big Fish. From VHHS, Samantha Colber in Orchestra Pit, Skylar Torry, Technical Crew and Costumes, Valerie Smith, Technical Crew Construction Crew, Sophia Schmelzer, Technical Crew Construction Crew, Mackenzie Furlat Ensemble, and Donna Lee Black Ensemble. From LHS, Claire Reese-Austin for Ensemble. The festival will be held January 11th through 13th at Illinois State University in Normal. District 128 Special Olympians were among the 4,200 record number athletes who competed in six sports at the 2017 Special Olympics. Illinois Summer Games held June 9th to 11th in Bloomington, Normal. D12 athletes received the following honors. Austin Yosenhans in bocce ball was gold in singles and silver in doubles. Nathan Ferrara in bocce was silver in doubles. Mallory Marvin in track was seventh place in the 50-meter. Eric Hatterlin in track was bronze in the 200-meter. Anna Scholler in bocce was silver in doubles. Hope McEladdy was in bocce was silver in doubles, and Vinnie Roberts was also silver in singles in bocce ball. You might get the impression that we have a long history of excellence in bocce ball with our Special Olympians. And former Superintendent Dave Clough and I once went over and took them on for a challenge, and we were destroyed. So, really good. In addition to the state games, members of the family of former District 128 Special Olympics Coach Jim Rogers were on hand June 8th for the unveiling of a memorial brick honoring Coach Rogers at the Special Olympics Illinois Tribute Park in Normal. The park, dedicated in June 2015, is a lasting tribute to the enduring spirit of athletes, families, volunteers, and donors. Coach Rogers, who passed away in 2015, was one of the first coaches to join head coach Andy Compton in the early years of the District 128 Special Olympics program. The memorial brick was funded through generous donations by present and former D128 Special Olympics parents, coaches, and team members. And LHS Junior Miriam Tolba recently received the National Center for Women in Information Technology Northern Illinois Affiliate Award for Honorable Merit from NCWIT. The award recognizes a recipient for strength of their computing aspirations and accomplishments, as well as their leadership ability, academic history, and plans for post-secondary education. So, congratulations to, um, all of our District 128 students and they will be active throughout the summer and we'll have good news to report on. Uh, next on my report as we updated the program and personnel committee earlier this evening, uh, we want to let the public, particularly, uh, the Libertyville public know that we have resolved the graduation date issue for next year at Libertyville High School. Graduation will be Thursday, May 24th, uh, at the Sears Center. Quick overview, uh, just to review that again, um, when we changed our calendar, uh, to have final exams before the winter holiday, I'd altered our end-of-the-year schedule. Our traditional date that, uh, we have and is held for us at Sears Center, um, was after Memorial Day and, uh, would be even later, uh, next year, just to not work for us. So, the only available date, uh, I think that was actually on the calendar, was, uh, May 18th. That created a myriad of problems with seniors. Senior final exams, um, do we bring seniors back after? Um, you know, graduation for finals, no, of course, we're not going to do that. Do we give the seniors, uh, finals in their classes, uh, which are mixed classes and during regular periods? That creates other instructional problems, uh, at the end of the year. Do we not have senior finals, which probably would have made some of the seniors happy?
Unless they needed the grade.
Yeah, I'm guessing, yes. If they needed the grade, yeah, could actually do it, but, uh, notwithstanding, that's a broader educational conversation about final exams in general, um, and we have not arrived at that point yet. So, uh, we began looking at, you know, viable options. As you know, we have a very large graduation, you know, 42 to 4,800, uh, people attend there, so we need a unique, uh, facility. We've done this several times over the years. But, uh, before we actively pursued, uh, a Plan B option, Sandra Cruckman, Marina's administrative assistant, soon Tom's administrative assistant, uh, actually called back and, uh, to double check with Sears Center and lo and behold, Lake Park High School down in the western suburbs needed to move their graduation from Thursday, May 24th to, uh, May 31st, which opened up that date, uh, for us. We were able to lock that date in, uh, and so both our graduations will be on the 24th. That's very common for multi, those of us that work, have worked in multi-high school districts will simply split the board up, um, we'll split the central district administrative staff up, um, at the two graduations. So, uh, now that we have that date, we'll be locked in, um, on that corresponding date, um, every year moving forward at the Sears Center. Again, great folks to work with out there, um, but a lot of work, um, the staff at LHS has done a lot of work to, uh, you know, make that renewable every year, uh, at, uh, minimal effort. And I did mention, um, earlier, um, that, um, we will have a different version of the National Anthem at graduation, uh, next year. Okay, so the heart is in the right place, uh, for the National Anthem this year, but probably, I think we agree that, uh, probably the, um, uh, the locale or the event might have not been the most appropriate, um, forum, uh, for that particular National Anthem. So, uh, anyway, I think we are, uh, in good shape of the graduation date. Uh, we're very excited to be able to kind of nail that down. And as Rita works with the calendar committee, part of the conversation that we've had is when we start to work on next year's calendar in the fall, we will actually try and look two years out, uh, and then we will work back from when the seniors, final exams and when the seniors have, um, graduation. And, uh, just as a last, thank you to Marina, uh, great job with your commencements over the years and, uh, always been first class and, and really great. So, we're very thankful of that. Okay, so, um, LHS student parking, okay? Uh, we've spent a lot of time on that, um, over the last month or so. Uh, we had a very productive meeting, uh, with Mayor Terry Weppler, Village Administrator Chris Clark and Police Chief, um, Clint Hurdigan. Um, and with us was Assistant Principal for Operations Eric Maroscher and Dusan Rasik, who is the, um, Police Resource Officer at Libertyville High School. Uh, we investigated, uh, a number of options that we talked about, um, and tomorrow night we have the Streets Committee meeting. Several of our team members will be there, uh, for a follow-up, but, uh, one of the options that we looked at, uh, were parking garage, um, nearest, uh, the high school. Uh, we also looked at parking in and around Butler Lake, um, area, in the park there, uh, absolutely. We looked at, uh, some of the other options that were talked about, including, you know, laying some, um, stone down on the, uh, a couple lots that we do own across the street. Uh, there are some issues with I dot there in terms of the width of the driveway that would be required, uh, going through a long approval process with them and not knowing whether, at the end of the day, they would actually approve that. On Route, um, 176, um, we also looked at, um, Bill had mentioned earlier, we're also contacting, um, the churches in the area. We also assessed Motorola option, kids parking out at Motorola, getting on a shuttle bus, coming, um, back to school. So, we ran all those ground balls out and it seems at this point, and again, I don't want to obligate, you know, anybody in a conversation that's ongoing and needs to be processed a little bit more, but it seems like, uh, Butler Lake, um, Park and that area may be our best option. Students would be able to walk the path, we would maintain the path, uh, particularly in the winter in terms of plowing it. Depending on where they're parking up there, they may need to cross Lake Street, but they're not crossing, you may be Garfield in the morning or some of the other, um, streets. And then, um, you know, also looked at the parking garage. So, they'll be talking about some of those options, um, tomorrow night against, uh, the village was, as they almost always are, um, was very willing to work with us on a, kind of a two-year temporary solution, um, moving forward. So, that's kind of where we stand. So, we'll have more information after the meeting tomorrow night, uh, with the Streets Committee and if the Village Board needs to vote on anything, I believe their reg- regular Village Board meeting follows that. So, we would have an opportunity, opportunity to know, uh, what that outcome would be. So, again, good, um, conversations over a number of months with village officials, including, um, Chief Hurdigan and the police, our resource officer and our personnel at Libertyville High School. So, um, the one other thing I wanted to, uh, report out on because this question was asked at, uh, committee meetings, we went back and did, um, quite an assessment or, or at least consideration of the concept of, at this, what we would say is a pretty late date, looking at, um, the option of doing semester-by-semester main lot parking. And, uh, our conclusion is that would really create more confusion at this point. It's pretty deep into the summer, we're almost into July, people are out gone, um, and to try and make all that work. So, our recommendation at the committee to the board was that we continue the process that we've established for this year and we continue a conversation about, uh, semester-by-semester parking, uh, in the main lot for, um, the following year. So, just to review, all seniors who, um, won the Google Randomizer Lottery for parking, uh, will be able to park in the main lot next year. Any other seniors who, um, indicated an interest in driving, which included a couple of students who for various reasons may have missed, you know, getting their name in on the announcements, uh, will be accommodated at the Brainerd Lot next year with the sticker. So, they're guaranteed, um, a parking spot, um, you know, a block and a half or so, um, away from campus will not have to compete with juniors, uh, for that. Uh, there has been some conversation, again, with the village about the Diamond Lot, um, and District 70 about the possibility of actually striping that lot. Uh, it's not really striped, uh, right now and then having the village monitor that, so the parking would be a little bit more organized and not so random, um, over there, um, you know, moving forward. So, uh, that looks like the plan right now and as, um, Anna mentioned, um, earlier, we've got a team of people, again, including the, uh, police who are looking at traffic and particularly drop-off, uh, patterns there. We have and are still, uh, having some conversation and some consideration of the possibility of a later start at Libertyville next year, possibility of adopting, um, you know, Vernon Hills' time schedule, which is 20 to 25 minutes later. Uh, the idea, if we were to pursue that, we would need to make that decision pretty soon. Um, and secondly, there's no tangible evidence, because we can't do an apples and apples, apples-to-apples comparison to see if that would make a difference in the morning, but the working theory would be it would open a longer gap in the morning. The afternoon is not nearly as problematic, uh, at LHS because a number of the seniors are, are gone, uh, by eighth period, so that lot's a little more cleaned out if you've been there at the end of the day and the buses are able to, um, to get out of, um, you know, to get out of there reasonably. We think we could, uh, accommodate, you know, athletics, uh, in the back of the year. We still have some legwork to do with the bus company to see if, you know, they can do that, although we're not sharing buses with the elementaries, um, anymore. But we want to make sure that we're not doing that just to do it. So, if we don't think between us and the police department, uh, in troubleshooting us that that would actually make a difference in the morning and there's no reason to change that schedule, that's really consensus of the wisdom on that. Um, so, if we were going to do, uh, anything along, um, uh, kind of that line, it would be right after, you know, the 4th of July holidays. So, we can, you know, let our own staff know, uh, let parents know. But again, we don't see a, we don't see a definitive yield there yet, uh, but I didn't mention that in, uh, committee earlier and I wanted to make sure that I mentioned it, uh, tonight. So, uh, that's where we're at on student parking and by tomorrow evening, uh, or at the latest Wednesday morning, hopefully we should have some direction. Uh, but I do want to comment, uh, compliment to village again, Terry and Village Administrator, Police Chief, uh, Dusan for, uh, their work with us on this. Again, very accommodating, very willing to work with us to try and resolve the problem. Okay? Any other questions? Okay. Uh, next on my agenda are LHS Athletic Director, uh, position. Again, uh, we did this update in, uh, committee earlier. Uh, after, um, an extensive search for the Athletic Director position, we had lots of interest, uh, and there were four candidates, uh, who really rose to the top, any of the four of which would, um, I think Tom felt, would, Tom Colentes felt, uh, and the team at Libertyville felt, uh, would have done, uh, really, uh, good work, uh, as, really great work as an Athletic Director. For a variety of really different reasons, uh, none of the four, uh, were either able to, um, accept the position or take the position. So, that left Tom and the team in a situation to kind of review the rest of the candidates and again, there was, uh, I think in our view, a substantive drop-off between the top four and the other candidates. As we've said before, we will not settle, uh, in this district. Um, we have several examples over the last 10 or 12 years, uh, where we went to interims rather than just taking someone to fill a position. Uh, we'll wait to get the next, um, you know, really top-shelf Athletic Director, um, you know, in a process for next year. So, we began to look at, Tom began to look at, suggest, um, interim Athletic Directors for, uh, next year. So, we informed the board, um, at the committee meeting that John Fischel, uh, who's a long time, um, teacher, coach, um, particularly in the swimming program, uh, was Assistant Athletic Director for several years at Libertyville High School, uh, is well-known in the community, great organizational skills, very good people skills, uh, and he currently, um, on contract takes care of our, uh, building rentals in the district, which is a huge, um, undertaking. Um, will be one of the interims. Uh, the other interim will be Andy Oberremp, and Andy is, uh, recently retired Athletic Director at New Trier High School, uh, again, very highly regarded, uh, by his peers and the folks at New Trier. Um, Randy also has, um, collegiate background. He was, um, actually at the collegiate level as a teacher, professor and coach, uh, for a number of years before he moved to, uh, New Trier to take on, uh, that position. The way Tom and the team have structured those two positions, that each sport will have an assigned Athletic Director. So, if you are a boys soccer parent, you know that Athletic Director X is your Athletic Director. So, it's not, uh, going to be dependent who's in that day, um, in, in terms of handling, you know, all of the things that would go, uh, with that particular sport. They did a great job of kind of articulating that plan and putting that plan together. Um, and Al and I both believe it's a, it's a really strong program and we've got two really good people, uh, to do that job. So, sometimes toward mid-year, uh, next year, which is, um, really kind of the normal time you would begin that kind of work, uh, then Tom will work with Bryant, who will be in Al's position then, uh, to post that position and then, uh, we'll go through the, the process again. So, um, that position will be hired as part of the agenda this evening because we had a conversation about that at the, um, Personnel Committee, uh, earlier. And then, of course, if the board votes on that, then we'll be getting that information out to parents. Tom will be getting that information out, uh, to, uh, parents and students and staff tomorrow, um, morning sometime. Okay? Any other questions on that since we did it the first time? Okay, next, uh, Lane, Mr. Hassler, he had, uh, mentioned detachments before, um, and, uh, not to add too much more to that, but we, uh, went into a little bit more depth, uh, in committee meetings. Some of the citizens may not be aware that we are often contacted by subdivisions who, uh, are on the periphery outside our borders, who wish to detach from their current subdivision in school districts and come into our district. At the end of the day, the, um, what's often problematic with that is that, um, we cannot control the growth, uh, we cannot control the footprint of our district. So, uh, taxpayers have given us resources based on projected enrollment. We built two really wonderful facilities here, uh, to serve our kids, um, moving forward and, um, if we have, um, a number of detachments over a period of time, uh, not only do we get those additional kids in the district, for us now, particularly at a time where there's been some proposed development in Libertyville, there has been proposed development in Vernon Hills, um, which could impact our student enrollment, i.e. our facilities at some point, um, down the line. And that is even more an issue, as Mr. Hassler has pointed out, for the elementary, um, districts. At the high school, we have a little better ability to absorb students because those students are spread across eight periods. Um, in an elementary school, if they have 25 new third graders show off, they have to have a dedicated classroom and they have to have a dedicated teacher for those third graders. So, it's more problematic. So, we've worked through several of these over the last three or four years. We have two active ones right now that Lynn Heinz Scarianno Spurk is working with the districts and joint counsel for us, uh, moving forward, um, that we're waiting for a, a ruling on a judge where we hear that under an old set of rules or a new set of laws and actually we helped, um, you know, create, um, in the system. So, uh, we simply bring that to the board once a year, so we kind of review the status. We go through that again, we see if the board has any additional questions. I will let the public know in the last four months, I have been personally contacted by Arbor Vista Subdivision, which is in the far northeast corner of the district, as well as Merritt Club regarding their interest to detach from, um, the, the current school districts that they would be affiliated with and come into District 128. And again, generally speaking, um, we work pretty closely with, um, all the affected districts, um, in that process, um, you know, to ensure that all the districts, you know, continue to remain whole. So, um, I don't think the board, uh, speak for you tonight, earlier in conversation, um, I don't think the board, um, is, uh, changing its position on that, but, uh, once a year again, we just like to overview the, the big picture because often we're asked, why don't we take day breaks in, or what, Daybreak Farms are one of the groups, you know, there's good EAB there and, you know, would not be many students. If, if we acceded and we took, um, Daybreak Farms in, part of the issue is we have now expanded the footprint of our district. So, the next subdivision next to Daybreak Farms now has the opportunity to legally engage in the detachment process. So, you can do the math on that, uh, as one district might be granted a detachment and then next subdivision, the next subdivision, and we have no control over that, uh, at a time where resources are challenging right now by, by anybody's, um, measure with the condition of the state. So, unless somebody has anything to add to that, I think that, um, is the issue, okay? Uh, LHS Pool Project, Yas, do you want to do a, you know, an overview of kind of where Mark is and where we're at in the process?
Okay. So, uh, this evening we have a couple of representatives from District 128 at the village, uh, meeting to review our plans for the upcoming pool at LHS. Late Friday evening, uh, we received some communication from the, uh, Development Review Committee on some of the changes that they would like for us to make to our project. Right now, we are still assessing those requests to see what the impact... Late Friday evening, we received some communication from the Development Review Committee on some of the changes that they would like for us to make to our project. Right now, we are still assessing those requests to see what the impact will be on our rather limited and tight budget for the pool and whether or not those are things that we can or are willing to take on. We will have a better idea of what the expectations are after the meeting today and we hope to report to the board on that tomorrow. Amongst some of the unanticipated items that came from this review was adding more parking spaces at LHS, looking at adding a detention facility for all three projects or all three phases of the project at the same time, as well as some additional information that meant that we could not get the approval that we were seeking tonight, but rather that would happen in July, which is obviously a concern for us as that would delay our own project. So hopefully between a few of us here, we can address that with the village and bring the project back on time and in under budget.
More information tomorrow, right? Any other questions on that? So Brenner, Memorial Update, I think we can say we're on target right now. We've gotten necessary approvals from the village. Yas, I understand that we'll be doing some bidding on that.
We are ready to go out to bid very soon.
And then, which we should be, that board should be processing in July and we think we're on target to be done before all of the LHS 100th Anniversary celebration in the fall. Illinois 100th Legislature. Where we're at right now is we're not still. We have received over the last few days, we being superintendents have received over the last few days, to the credit of our local legislators, many communications, questions about how things might impact us, those type of things. And right now, what we know for sure is there is no budget agreement unless that's happened while I'm speaking at this point. The school funding reform bill, the evidence-based school funding formula, which was passed by the House and the Senate, has not been signed by the governor right now, working through some related Chicago Public School issues. It's our best chance to change a really broken formula in the state of Illinois without anyone losing what they currently get, but still distributing greater resources to the districts that need them across the state. So we'll just be monitoring that closely. I did participate in a panel last week down Buffalo Grove at Ivy Hall Elementary School, which was sponsored by Representative Carol Senti. Representative Will Davis was at the meeting. He is the Chair of the House Education Appropriations Committee, also a great guy, great legislature. Kevin's done some work with him along the way. But Will is also the sponsor of 128, which is the evidence-based school funding reform model that went through the House, essentially the same as Senate Bill 1 that went through the Senate. And Ralph Martieri is from the Center for Tax and Budget Accountability. That's a nonpartisan kind of research group. You may have seen Ralph on Chicago Tonight. He's often a guest there. He often testifies in Springfield on the school funding formula. And we actually had a turnout of around 50 people who learned more, asked great questions about the school funding formula and how it might impact their particular district. And so we'll just continue to monitor as we're moving forward and obviously if anything shakes out on either of those fronts, I'll let the board know and we'll try and get the word out to the community. Nobody's guessed whether it's actually going to get done. I will tell you today, we were asked early in the day, what would the impact of a four-year property tax freeze be on your district? Challenging, okay? Challenging for our district, catastrophic for a number of other districts. So it's a balancing act between the property tax freeze, as Pat pointed out in our Finance 101 presentations that we did throughout the district this year. It's a balancing act because if you go four years, in a district like ours, Yas, I'm going to guess it's 5.1 or 2 million for two years, we're probably going to be at 10 or 12 million for four years and that's revenue loss and what we have to do is take that revenue from existing things in the district. So that's challenging for us. Imagine how difficult it is for the 75% of the school districts in the state that are hanging on by their fingernails without reserves. So there's a lot of conversation about that balance between a property tax freeze and the income tax extension, levying more income tax and trying to find that balance and that's part of what they're working on. So I'm sure they're going to have a lot more conversations going through the end of the month when they need to get it done, if it's going to get done. So, okay, and just want to wrap the 128 Renaissance up tonight, Great to Greater. And Bo, if you can just put up the student achievements, maybe the first or second slide? I don't have a clicker, so. Again, we've been having, I've been having a little conversation with you every month about what we're calling the District 128 Renaissance and really, you know, Great to Greater. And based on large concept on Jim Collins's work in the business world on Good to Greater moving forward, and there are a number of components, but the point is, this continued growth that we've had over the district over a number of years and our frame of reference, many of us, is really for the last 12 years or so, hasn't happened by chance, okay? It has happened through a focused mission, okay, a set of goals, a set of plans to get there, ways to measure our progress, and then looking at the continual growth of our students. And it's predicated by the great resources that our community provides us, the readiness of many of our learners who come into school, you know, ready to go to the next level, the work of our teachers in growing students that may not come up with all the tools during that period of time moving forward. And so people are a huge part of that. We spent last month talking about the primacy that we put on, you know, kind of the recruiting, interviewing, hiring, professional development and retention process here. And we believe the emphasis on that process at all levels of the organization has allowed us to continue to grow and put the best people, the best leaders with our staffs and the best teachers in front of our kids that we can possibly have. And we believe that we've demonstrated some pretty significant growth in student achievement. So I want to wrap up kind of where I finished and that's very quickly highlighting a couple of our student achievement gains over the last 12 years. So first, again, this is our ACT Growth and Achievement. From 2005 to 2016, you can see that the district overall went up 1.2. Remember, an ACT, anything .3 higher or lower statistically significant. And you can look at the growth at both of the schools. Secondly, Bo, if you want to go to the next one, on our AP Growth, this is another phenomenal, I think, why don't you flip up a couple of slides, Bo, I think? Nope, back one, okay. So on our AP Growth and Achievement, going back to Dave Clough's time here, where there's really been, you know, an organized strategy to open the door to more students to take that rich and enriched advanced placement at national level curriculum. 103% increase in students taking AP exams, 131% increase in the number of AP exams taken, 149% increase in the number of students earning scores of 3, 4, or 5 on the exams, and 173% increase in the number of students earning scores of 4 or 5. So the picture there is it's not just about ACT and advanced placement. However, those are two nationally recognized, nationally normed measures that we can look at. So in order, in a district like ours, it has a number of high achievers in it, okay, to move the needle at the level of ACT and AP Growth and Achievement, it's all about continuing to move students up that growth ladder. So students who may come in, you know, performing relatively low, being able to move them up to low-middle and then middle-middle, et cetera, somebody that comes in kind of in the middle, adds a measure to be able to take those kids to high-middle and then low-high, et cetera, because we can't move that needle statistically with the number of kids that we have bunched in the top already if we're not addressing all students. And so that's a primary focus for us. So we want to thank the staff for their work again. We want to thank the board for their support and work with us on that. We want to thank the communities for the incredible support and resources you've given us to do what we do with your children and we want you to know, this is how we measure ourselves, on these two measures and a number of other measures during the school year. And the bottom line in our business is, are our students growing and are they achieving at higher levels and can we measure that? And that's the bottom line for us. So that's a little bit of our journey from Great to Greater, taking this two phenomenal high schools and really taking them to even, you know, maybe a more elite level, but it's predicated on the work of all of us collectively as a village, if you will, to help our students be more successful. And that's our mission going forward as we continue. So again, thanks for your support. Last, we have, next to last for me, we have our Freedom of Information request this month. On 6/8/17, we received a request from Emma Sasic from the Daily Herald. The requested employees hired to instruct driver's ed courses in each year from 2012 to 2017, including the employee's full name, age, other classes taught, or other duties performed by this employee, salary, and compensation for driver's education instruction if it is not part of the employee's regular salary. Al Fleming and Denise Swett followed up on this and we actually revised our request with depth of information, so we will respond. And on the back, Emma Sasic from Daily Herald also had a revised request, which supersated the first request, employees who instructed driver's ed courses in each year from 2012 to 17, including employees' full name, age, other classes taught, other duties performed by this employee, salary, compensation for driver's education instruction if it is not part of the salary of the employee's regular salary. Again, Al and Denise responded to this. The deadline was 6/15/17. We responded on 6/15/17 and approximate time spent between the two of them was 1.5 hours. And I will note, we give these requests somewhat often from news agencies and often third-party agencies, particularly from news media, who may be gathering information from all schools for a larger story. And so we don't know if that's what this is, but I suspect that it probably is part of a larger data mining gathering for a larger story. And then last for me tonight is appointment of new FOIA officers. As you may realize, Al and Yasmin and Denise are FOIA officers. They work collectively, so with Al's retirement and Yasmin's retirement, my recommendation is to appoint Brian Kelly and Dan Stanley as our new FOIA officer. So I would look for a motion from the board and a vote.
So moved. Second, discussion, roll call.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, Pat, I have nothing under others, so that concludes the superpenal's report.
All right, thank you. Number three, the consent vote agenda, we reviewed it earlier tonight. I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed.
I move to approve the consent vote. Move agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee, number one, say.
Yes, first, I am a board policy person, Policy 7100.
There's no action there.
No, just for the first reading. So do we have to read it?
No.
No. If there aren't any questions, then we'll bring it back for second reading.
And then the second item, Educational Tour Request, PACT Just Orchestra Tour, Budapest, Vienna, and Prague, March 23 through April 1, 2018. Looking for a motion to approve that.
I'll move it as long as I get to go.
Any discussion about that other than wanting to go along? All right, so, roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Just to highlight, those kinds of trips are at no cost to the district.
Your student page, right.
Every time you see one of those, you go, wow. You read the details. A lot of cost to the student and no cost to the district.
And no other.
Okay, so the finance chairperson, Batson.
Thank you, Dr. Curry. We have a number of things here. First up, prevailing wage resolution, this is a standard resolution we have to do every year to ensure we take care of the prevailing wage requirement. Any further comment?
No, it's just to make sure that the district is compliant with the prevailing wage resolution. And just as a side note, we do occasionally receive FOIAs asking to make sure that we have adopted this resolution.
Yas, could you just take a minute and explain prevailing wage to the community members that may be watching, what that is?
The state of Illinois publishes the minimum amount that should be paid for various trades. Those are stated very clearly as to what the rate is in the resolution that we adopt this evening, so that if the district was going to go out and award a bid, one of the requirements is that we clearly state that the individuals who will work on that project are paid the prevailing wage. And for labor, it could be a masonry, it could be plumbing, it could be anything that really has a prevailing wage number attached to it.
The prevailing wages are set by the state, correct?
It is set by the state on an annual basis and it is published a little sooner than it was this year, so that's why it was a little late in coming.
And because it's published every year, we have to vote on it every year to accept that new set of prevailing wage.
Correct.
A company to be hired, we assume, or we require that their bid is paying.
That is right, and what we request of them is their payroll sheets, basically showing that employee X was paid this dollar amount, so that we have proof of that too should we ever have to report to the Department of Labor.
Do we have a motion, please?
So I move that we approve paying the prevailing wage resolution as just presented.
Second.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the LHS Pool Project Construction Management Contract. I assume we're going to table this because of some delay in resolving a couple of final issues.
That is correct, and since our FNF committee meeting, I've received a couple of emails from our attorneys, so that process is ongoing right now.
Okay, so we will be tabled.
Yeah, so we have to table that because we don't have all the information. Item C, Approval of the FY 2018 Budget Calendar, and there's a couple of key items coming up, couple of key dates.
That is right. We will publish a notice in the newspaper of our public hearing to be set for August 14. The publication will be in a newspaper of local circulation, in our case, it's the Daily Herald, and it will be published on July 10. It will state where the public hearing will be, what time, and between the period of the publication of the notice and our discussion, our adoption of the budget, we will have discussions not only with the board, but also the board will be available for any public inspection, both on our website and at our district office.
So I think the key items here, the July 10 that will be published, but to some comments earlier in committee, the board really hasn't, this will be the first time that we all see this, so for anybody seeing that for the first time, we're really seeing this proposed budget for the first time, gives us an opportunity to review it prior to the August 14 public hearing and so people, you know, people are welcome to come at 6 o'clock on August 14 to comment here on our conversation. I also believe there's going to be a special board meeting that we're trying to organize somewhere between those two dates so that we as a board can get into some details of that budget, make some recommendations and really, really come up with, you know, really understand what's in that prior to that August 14 meeting. That date hasn't been set yet, but that will be posted on the website as usual for the requirements so many days ahead, you'll have a posting of that meeting, so people are welcome to join us on that meeting as well. We will have a Facilities and Finance Committee meeting on
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Okay, and motion passes. The next item is a portion of that calendar, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the 2018 budget. That's the August 14th date, and that's the official public hearing, 6 o'clock, so we need a motion to approve that date.
So moved.
Second in.
Any further comments?
Are we splitting our meetings now, Thurman?
Yes.
So it might be faster.
No, it's at 6 o'clock.
Oh, this is not the facility plan, sorry.
Yeah, this is a public hearing, a specific public hearing for the budget.
What is, oh, sorry.
And that will take place after FNF, then?
Jury.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it'll be 6 o'clock and/or at the conclusion of the Facilities and Finance Committee reading that, right?
Actually, it would have to be exactly at 6:00.
It'll be, okay, so we may have to.
Or we might go 6:30.
We might, yeah.
You know, that way you've got an hour to wrap now, so.
So.
But the time will be posted.
Okay. Did we take a rule call on that?
No.
Okay. We have the motion, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or anything? Comment? Okay, rule call.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Next item is the appointment of school treasurer, which we also have to do, and given the retirement of Yasmin, we need to have a new treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Anything to add to that?
Well, I think you ought to add that the motion is for Dan Stanley to.
Yes, I'm here, yeah, yeah.
Let's name them.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you for the clarification.
Who made the? We don't say that enough.
Kevin.
So motion to approve Dan Stanley as the school treasurer. Okay, any further? Thank you, Rick, for catching that. Okay, rule call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Congratulations, Yasmin.
Congratulations. You have the other thing on here.
You're in, again.
Yeah. And then last but not least, a bid recommendation, this is for the LHS West Access Drive.
As discussed earlier at our Facilities and Finance Committee, we are requesting approval of a bid to A Land Concrete Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $139,751 for